Good afternoon and welcome to the joint meeting of the Glendale City Council and the Glendale Housing Authority. May we have roll call, please, Mr. Kasakian?
Roll call for council, council members Friedman, Garpetian.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Sinanian.
Here.
And Mayor Devine.
Here.
Roll call for housing authority. Authority members, Devine.
Here.
Friedman. Garpetian.
Here.
Eli.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Karazian.
Here.
Chair Sinanian.
Here.
Thank you. And for those of you watching, Ms. Friedman is that will not be attending this afternoon's meetings because she's at a MWD Annual Budget Meeting, so she has been called away. So may we have the first item, please?
Item is a report of the clerk. The agenda for the April 26, 2016 joint public meeting of the City Council and the Housing Authority was supposed on Friday, April 22, 2016, on the bulletin board outside City Hall. Item before you on this joint body meeting is Director of Community Development regarding some rising past efforts and discussions on rent control, rent mediation, and other citywide rent affordability-related issues. One A is City Council motion to receive and file report or provide staff further directions as deemed necessary. And one B is a Housing Authority motion to receive and file the report or provide staff further direction as deemed necessary.
Thank you very much. And I'll go to...
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Due to an interest in a business organization that holds rental properties in the city of Glendale, and seeing as this discussion involves and may involve a discussion on rent control, I will be recusing myself from the considerations and deliberations.
Thank you. And for the report?
Let me just clarify, clear the record with council member Najarian's recusal. We've lost a quorum under the Brown Act for the council. We have three council members actually participating in this meeting. Council member Sinanian is participating by teleconference, but under the Brown Act, there must be a quorum in Glendale to continue that meeting. So at this point, we, Madam Mayor, should adjourn the council meeting, but we can continue with the Housing Authority portion of the meeting. And at that point, the chair, actually, Mr. Sinanian, takes over the meeting and provides the report.
Okay. So do I have a motion for adjournment of the council?
So moved.
Second.
Second?
Second.
Roll call?
You already stepped down.
Okay. All right. So then, Mr. Chair.
I'll take it from here?
Yes, sir.
Very well. Do we have a report on this item?
Yes, sir, we do. The council has asked for a historical perspective on this discussion of rent control as it's been considered in Glendale over the last two decades, and at the same time, also a general overview of affordable housing development and the various tools that we use to endeavor to make living in Glendale affordable. So with no further ado, let me bring up our Deputy Director of Housing, Mr. Peter Zovak, who will take you through a very comprehensive PowerPoint presentation. Peter?
Thank you, Mr. Choa. Vice Chair Kelly, members of the Housing Authority, thank you very much. As Mr. Choa had mentioned, this, at the request of the City Council, this report is an informational report providing a brief summary of past efforts by the city and/or the Housing Authority with regards to the issue of rent control, rent mediation, and other citywide rent affordability-related issues. We understand that this report comes at a time when the City Council and the Housing Authority have been hearing increasing concerns from residents and constituents about the impact housing costs have had on lower-income households. According to our own Glendale Water and Power Department, residential vacancy rates for apartments in Glendale for the last five years have been tracking at just below 2%. So we understand that it is a challenge. Moving forward in this presentation, we thought that we should first start off with a few slides that kind of give some context to this issue to demonstrate that it is not an issue that is a Glendale-only issue, and is really something that is related to the whole region, the entire state. The reality is, is that there is data showing that this exists for many cities around Glendale, many cities similar to Glendale, and both in Northern and Southern California. Data for the city and state show a demand for affordable housing across the board for lower-income households. Recently, the state Legislative Analyst's Office issued a pretty comprehensive report on the status of affordable housing in the state of California, and we just took two little bits of information out of that. An average California home cost approximately two and a half times the average national home price is one of the statistics they had, $440,000 versus $180,000 nationwide. The average California rent is approximately 50% higher than the rest of the country. That's about $1,240 monthly versus $840 for the country. What we did is staff went further to take a look at this a little more comprehensively, and what we've done is we've extracted some data from the 2014 American Community Survey Census Report, and we were able to provide some comparison of Glendale's picture relative to other cities in California. What we did in this first map was go ahead and map where Glendale's median gross income fell between some comparative cities. And as you can see, Glendale's median gross, I'm sorry, median gross rent. And as you can see, Glendale's median gross rent is higher than a few cities... The PowerPoint doesn't work on the TV, so let's try this. Okay. So what it does show is that Glendale's median gross rent is higher than a few other cities within California, that being the city of Fresno, San Bernardino, Sacramento, slightly higher than the city of Los Angeles. We are just below or $2 away from the California average, but we do have some cities that are higher than Glendale in median gross rent, some very adjacent. We have Anaheim, which is higher, followed by Burbank, San Diego, Pasadena, San Jose, and tops out in San Francisco. What we then wanted to look at is if we were to try and based upon the median incomes for these households and apply some type of affordable rent standard, typically 30% of rent towards those incomes, what would those rents be? And this is this chart here of what could technically be considered affordable. And then how do you, once you apply them back to the median gross rent, what those differences are for the different agencies? And this is what this does in this third table here. It doesn't change the position of the cities in terms of standings, but what it does demonstrate is what that typically is, what it's called is affordability gap is between the various agencies. Some of these agencies, you see the affordability cap can range from $122 per month in what is considered affordability. Los Angeles is at $437. Glendale, we're about approximately $356 a month. San Francisco, about $258 a month, $254 for San Jose, and some numbers in the mid-200s for San Diego, Burbank, and Pasadena. What it does show is the impact of what median household income can have relative to your rents. And so what you tend to see is cities with a lower median income in their households then have a larger affordability gap that exists with their housing costs. We think it's important to note some of the efforts that the city and the Housing Authority has demonstrated in commitment to providing balanced, quality, affordable housing for the residents. Keep in mind, the Housing Authority has been in place since 1978, and keep that date in mind, or that year in mind, 1978, it'll come up later. And through that, they provided a host of programs and projects to provide affordability, affordable housing to the residents of Glendale. They've done that with affordable housing projects that are designed for the rental population, new construction, provided multifamily rehab loans, go through some density bonus projects, Section 8, number of projects designed to balance housing with homeownership, new construction, first-time homebuyer, some additional density bonus projects under that category. We also have an emergency shelter housing program. We have an emergency shelter operated by Essentia. We have in addition a winter shelter that's operated. And we provide some transitional housing programs using projects, using programs such as shelter plus care and scattered site projects. In terms of numbers for those types of programs, new construction development by the Housing Authority has totaled about 1,300 units. Annually, the Section 8 program assists about 3,000 households on an annual basis. In terms of our emergency shelter, about 2,000 unduplicated persons are assisted through the emergency shelter activities of the city. About 130 households are assisted in the transitional scatter site apartment settings through the emergency shelter. Density bonus projects we've enacted and are entitling a number of projects that total about 170 units that comes at no cost to the Housing Authority or the city. There are actual projects that have taken advantage of the state's density bonus provisions. First-time homebuyer programs, we've assisted over 200 households in buying their first homes. And with regards to multifamily and single-family rehab, we have over 1,600 households that have been assisted. So that's a large number that have been able to receive assistance from the Housing Authority over time. That's not to say that it didn't come without challenges, and more challenges, more so now than than in previous years. With the elimination of redevelopment, funding has now been a challenge and will continue to be for the next few years. How we've tried to address that is we've, at the staff level, have been looking at restructuring some of our loan portfolio and some of our existing projects that have generated substantial amount of program income coming back to the program. There is a bond issuance that is pending, Department of Finance resolution on the elimination of redevelopment that would generate a large pot of money for affordable housing activities. There's also some annual payments coming in related to the city loan repayment. Sites, finding suitable sites for development is challenging. We are looking at, with the Fifth and Sonora, developing our last Housing Authority-owned site before the elimination of redevelopment. We'll be coming back to you in May with our recommendations for that particular project. We've worked with partnerships with other entities within the city on land that they might hold and hold it for development, such as the YMCA. And we're also continuing to look at opportunity sites for the future development. And then our most recent activity has been on the legislative side, with the elimination of redevelopment taking up a platform with our legislators here in California in trying to provide more funding statewide, and hopefully it filters down to Glendale for affordable housing. And so for the last two to three years, the city has been taking an active role in analyzing the legislative proposals and then coming out and making recommendations.
I'm sorry, which program is that? I mean, for the legislative?
Looking at different bills that are being proposed annually and whether or not the city would be supporting them. They're not particularly projects now. They're concepts on generating, the state has on generating money for affordable housing that we will then in the future try and take advantage of and leverage.
Thank you.
One of the issues that will come up in the future for us, though, is a lot of these programs will then be administered at a state level, and we may have to compete as opposed to local direction. So we'd like to see a return of some local authority over those funds. In other words, it comes to you, and then you're able to apply it to Glendale as Glendale needs it, and let other cities apply as they need it as well. We could also look at something, a more local program that gives you more direct control. So those are things that we'll be developing as part of a legislative platform in the future.
So what has the city done? So now that we've painted this picture on what it is that we've done in the past with regards to development, what our challenges are, that this is not so much a Glendale issue as it is a statewide issue that we're facing, what has the city done in terms of work product with regards to the issue of rent control, rent mediation, and things along those lines? There was work done by the city. It was the last done in 2001. A committee was put together by the council at that time, a committee of 15 members that represented, from the community that represented interests of both tenants and landlords. They worked over probably about a three-year period in looking at the issue of addressing affordability, particularly with regards to rental. What they were charged with is, and what they did is they reviewed Glendale's rental housing market, evaluated the impacts of implementing rent control, rent stabilization, two terms that mean the same thing, explored the implementation of a voluntary rent mediation program, and they evaluated and came back and passed a just cause eviction ordinance to assist. It was too much of a report to attach to your report in terms of all their previous activity. So what we did within the report is provide a table, kind of listing some of the highlights of their work within those three years. We also had binders in the council's office to look at those if you wanted to do so prior to the meeting. But this table here really shows some of the things that they looked at, and some of the other issues that came up during that process. As you can see, as I mentioned, there were certain dates and times at which a voluntary rent mediation program was discussed. In the end, that voluntary rent mediation program was not successful, and it was discontinued. There was just cause eviction that came on board and proposed in 2002 and then refined all the way up to 2004. With regards to the issue of rent control, there are a couple of things that took place with that. No recommendation came out for rent control or recommending a rent control, but there were some activities that took place within the community related to that. There was a initiative, that petition that was gathered prohibiting any form of rent control to be put in place, and then there was a lawsuit challenging that initiative process that was brought forward based upon the signature gathering. So there was activity taking place, and then it was political at that time.
But none of this have gone through, none of this been finalized?
Rent control, there was no further discussion. There was information provided to the council, and the recommendation was not to pursue. Just cause eviction was enacted, rent mediation was enacted, and then within about six months failed because it was a voluntary. At that time, it was felt that the voluntary nature of the rent mediation really led to no commitment by both parties to work towards that end. So what is rent control? Interesting, rent control is something that was established during World War II and was a federal initiative that was established to help deal with the economy during World War II. It got reinstated for a couple more years after World War II, and then the early 50s was finally repealed. What you then had happen is that a number of local cities, typically on the East Coast, a number of small cities or large cities, continued with the rent control ordinance and just adopted it locally. What does rent control do? What rent control does is it establishes a base rent level for units. And traditionally, when you look back on the history of agencies that have enacted rent control, what they try and do is go back a few months or a year to establish rent control levels. The experience has been is that as agencies have started to start to negotiate the process for rent controls, a slew of rent increases start to come in in anticipation of maybe an ordinance eventually passing. So then what agencies have done is they've adopted a rent control ordinance that goes back in time, not too far, something to some fair degree, typically about a year, that then sets base rent levels for units. And those rent levels vary per project, per bedrooms in the same project, or per units in the same project. You could have units in one building by one owner whose rent levels are at different levels for various reasons, long-term occupancy of tenants versus brand-new tenants that have come in, and your rents may differ from a two-bedroom over here, that's $100 difference between a new one that you've just rented up. So even those units themselves are set at different levels depending upon what those levels were, say, a year ago, if that's where it is that the agency chooses to adopt as the base. So it's not a uniform rent level of one bedrooms across the city, two bedrooms. Every unit is different, every project is different, every unit is different within a project.
Is that how it is in the city of LA when they have rent control?
Correct. What it does, it, rent control also provides an automatic or inflationary increase for rent increases on an annual basis, and they hope to provide it in a manner that is consistent, in a manner that is also is based upon the economy at the time. Typically, CPI is something that's utilized by a number of agencies. It also provides carve-outs for financial feasibility. There's a need to be able to recognize that some projects may not be able to operate, some owners may not be financially feasible with their projects if it's at a level that does not support them. So there are carve-outs that need to be in place. Rent control does require intensive staff monitoring and the establishment of an appeals board or commission, and the monitoring of that is very intensive within the first five years of a rent control ordinance, tends to then stabilize over time. And to support something like this, most rent control cities are requiring some type of fee-based revenue for it. And in those cities where the fee-based revenue may not be enough to support the program, then city support is then required to keep that program up and running. The challenge with city support is that most typically it comes out of general fund operations. Why is that? Well, affordable housing with the projects and money that we use tie affordability back to income, back to household unit sizes. Rent control doesn't necessarily do that. So you cannot advocate the use of affordable housing funds with some type of stringent rent control system for all two-bedroom units to a product of rent control that doesn't take that into consideration. Rent control cities, we've got 13 in California that operate rent control, rent stabilization. It's about split halfway, seven, I believe, seven in Northern California, six in Southern California. Those cities with rent controls have either been brought in or initiated either through some type of charter amendment, municipal ordinance, or through some type of ballot initiative put together by the residents.
Beverly Hills has rent control?
Beverly Hills has a very quiet rent control-type program, very surprising to us.
Most of these programs, though, are 30-plus years old, and there's only one in recent time that we'll get to.
Beverly Hills?
But it's probably worth noting that although it's kind of a statewide crisis, you have those handful of cities out of 435 municipalities in the entire state of California.
And remember the chart where we had talked about gross rent in California, some of those on the higher end, San Francisco, San Jose, LA, just below Glendale. Coincidentally, they happen to appear on cities with rent control. So some might look at that and say, wow, a city with rent control is still having affordability issues nationwide.
The Housen Oaks, West Hollywood?
Correct. West Hollywood is an interesting one. West Hollywood was, rent control was initiated when residents approached the county at that time and asked for rent control. The county decided not to pursue it. So those same residents that were in support of it in West Hollywood then organized an initiative for incorporation. Then they incorporated in West Hollywood, and one of the first things they did was implement rent control. Okay. So we just took a sampling of some of the cities with rent control within California and provided just some information to give you some context. Largest rent control agency would be Los Angeles, formed in 1978, about 600,000 qualifying units, 82 employees, budgeted at a cost of about $15.5 million, followed by San Francisco, who initiated in '79, and a large drop from LA, 171,000 units, 32 employees, about $6.7 million. And then you have Santa Monica, 26,000 units, 25 employees at 4.7, and then some of the smaller agencies, Berkeley, West Hollywood, East Palo Alto. If you were to try to apply Glendale within this matrix here, Glendale would fall between San Francisco and Santa Monica at 45,000, approximately 45,000 units. I had talked about the formation of the Housing Authority back in 1978, and that date, you'll notice that a lot of these agencies, when they did implement rent control, were at that same time. A lot of things were going on in the country nationwide with the economy, with real estate. So a number of them sponsored their rent control initiatives in this 1978, 1979. A number of others tended to do that in 1980, in the mid-'80s. So it's really kind of two eras of when rent control came and was implemented. For the most part, no city has, no new city has initiated rent control for the past 30 years. There is this little footnote at the bottom, Richmond, Richmond, California. They implemented rent control in 2015, and it lasted for about a month before it was immediately repealed by the City Council. It was implemented on a 6-1 vote. After implementation, a ballot initiative was presented to the city clerk to repeal, and that ballot initiative, apparently by the city attorney's office, was deemed to be valid, and rather than go through election, on a 7-0 vote, the City Council repealed rent control.
Can you tell us what the basis of the repeal was, the appeal?
It was a ballot initiative to go ahead and repeal it, put together by owners.
Oh, okay.
So it was a ballot initiative, but council took a vote, it didn't go to the public? Is that what it is?
Rather than go through the election, the council just said, we'll take care of it, and they repealed their prior approval of the program.
So they approved it first, the council approved it first, then they repealed it? Basically, based on the challenge, they repealed it and voted, voted down their own decision?
Correct.
Okay.
Because they didn't want to go through the cost of the election?
Whatever collateral problems they saw for the community, for themselves.
So again, no new city in approximately the last 30 years to implement it. So we talked about what rent control does. This is what it does not do. We kind of touched on it earlier. Rent control does not evaluate household income. It's simply an across-the-board freezing of rents and putting it to a base level. It doesn't look at who's living in the household. You could have an attorney making $200,000 in one unit, an artist making $20,000 in the unit right next door, both are benefiting under rent control. Some might question, why would someone at $200,000 be able to benefit? So rent control does not evaluate household income. It does also not provide rents that... It does also not provide rents at levels affordable to tenant income under the manner that the Housing Authority has operated its program since 1978, which is a certain percentage of your household income is then calculated as to what is affordable for you. Rent control doesn't do that. It simply just freezes rents at a base rent.
So I, excuse me, Peter, so on the first, on the first instance, you could have the attorney or architect, as Peter said, presumably making a lot of money in a rent-controlled unit. You could also have somebody in the unit next door that doesn't have the income, and that same unit still is not affordable to them. So you have these wide swings between affordability and gross benefit, if you will, just in those first two bullets.
If you are really interested in trying to achieve affordability, it really requires time and increased household income before finally someone at a, if someone is, the rent is frozen at this level, and this particular person is at this income level, it will take time, and hopefully that person is improving their household income every year, before they get to a point where that rent is then affordable to them. How much time it might take before you achieve affordability, per some of the definitions that we've worked with in our other programs, it's unknown, but it certainly doesn't happen immediately.
In the same instance, if your, if your income is improving, you then kind of go the other way, and you fall into that first bullet category where it is, it is very affordable for you, because now your income has increased beyond the affordability for that unit.
How about the size of household? How about the size of household?
That could impact things as well, yes.
Yeah.
But it's not taken in, it's not taken into consideration in typical rent control programs. It would in affordable housing programs where we look at that.
And some of those cities with rent control going back quite a while, New York, for example, I think there's a number of them we found in doing research in this, where you have examples of what Mr. Lansafain explained. You might have an attorney in a unit that's paying $400 a month in rent, or someone else has been there for years and they're paying something along the same levels but with a much, much reduced income. Rent control does have the potential for unintended consequences. As we had, some of the examples we gave you, it could control rent when not needed or warranted in the case of someone with high income. Rent control does allow and is required to allow a reset upon vacancy, and so it resets to a market rate. So if there are all those years that there may be some affordability achieved, as soon as that vacancy occurs, that goes back to a market rate setting. Some of the experts claim that rent control does to call, does cause additional deferred maintenance in the housing stock within a community, and as a result, increased code enforcement is necessary when implementing or considering rent control. And the reasons for that could be both justified or unjustified, as it says in the slide there. You might have an owner who, with an increasing costs of, in other categories of operating their building, and then being limited with regards to the amount of rent that they can charge, may not be able to afford maintenance on a building, and it'll just have to be deferred until it might become a code enforcement issue. There might be other owners who will look at maintenance and might see it as a way to encourage vacancies by not looking and repairing things, hoping a tenant might say, well, let me move on to somewhere else, the conditions aren't here, are not that great. Either way, it then starts to get the city involved via code enforcement perspective. So they kind of go hand in hand. Rent control, there is an incentive, and we'll talk about that, but you could change the use and opt out of rent control. So rent control has been subject really to two major acts that have come in later on in the rent control history. One is the Costa-Hawkins Act, and what it does, it exempts any housing constructed after 1995 from rent control. It also states that if a, number two, new housing that was already exempt from a local rent control ordinance in place before 1995 must remain exempt. So Costa-Hawkins says that anything after 95 must be exempt from rent control. If you've enacted rent control prior to this act being approved by the state, and within your rent control you had exempted anything after 85, you have to stay at 85. You're not allowed to then bump up to 95. So any existing exemptions you had have to stay in place. It exempts single-family homes and condominium units, and then it allows and requires that once rental units become vacant, the rents can reset to a market rate level. Another act that came out of the rent control scene is something that actually started in Santa Monica, is the Ellis Act. And that was basically the argument that rent control within Santa Monica at the time that it was proposed really had no release valve for property owners. And so one property owner had argued is that you have to allow a property owner to go out of business. You can't continue to have this rent control restriction in place over time regardless of what might happen with the property. So the state came back and they adopted this act, and allows landlords to evict tenants of a rent-controlled building and remove the units from rent control if they're intent to change the use. And what you saw, the genesis for Santa Monica's rent control came what, after what they had called demolition derby in the mid-'70s. They had a large number of rental projects that were demolished to make way for new condominium development. They estimate that about 5% of their population was displaced as a result of all of these demolitions, and then they went through and started to look at rent control as a measure for that. But as I said, the Ellis Act then allows landlords to convert the use and opt out of rent control. You're starting to hear a lot of Ellis Act mentioned in the newspapers lately, not too long ago it was in the L.A. Times, and it's a phenomenon that is happening in Los Angeles with their rent-controlled buildings. Quite a number of them, as of late, have been submitting applications to change their rental units to condominiums and convert over.
So the Ellis Act is a, is a state law?
Correct.
That allows, it's not just Santa Monica?
Correct, correct. Someone in Santa Monica had actually taken that argument all the way to the Supreme Court. Supreme Court denied their argument, but said, there's something to your argument, but based upon what you submitted to us, they denied them. And then out of that, the state legislator said, okay, Supreme Court has said there's something, let's take a look at this, and then they came up with the Ellis Act.
And then at the same time, Peter, the landlords can use this, the carve-out, as in a reason for conversion? In other words, they can't afford the apartments with the rents that they're, they're asking, so they're, they're going to convert?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
So when the economy is at a point where homeownership is such a desired product and the price is right, people will convert. We talked about this. How would Glendale be compared to some of those cities? We have approximately 45,000 rental housing units that potentially could be subject to rent control. Once you start to look at some of the legislative carve-outs, you'd exempt about 5,000 to 7,000 units, typically units that come on board after 95. And there could be other local exemptions that could be created that might reduce that number even more.
One, before you go on, Peter, one thing, though, if you remember going back, that list of, of programs and activities that Peter talked about, those are about 7,000 units that are affected by rent control. So in, in a sense, you have, as the Housing Authority and the city council, you've touched about 20% of that potential rent control market already with affordability programs, whether it's rental housing that has long-term covenants, continuum of care, first-time home buyer, or Section 8. You're touching about 15% to 20% of that eligible market with your existing programs, which is a significant number.
Sorry, which ones are those programs again? Affordable housing?
Things like the affordable housing. You've developed 1,300 units over the last 15 years or so. You have 3,000 people that you're providing Section 8 vouchers for. You have 1,600 people that are in rehabilitated units that have some level of affordability covenants tied to them. So you can't just raise the rate. So again, you, you are using your housing programs to put affordability covenants. And again, going back to, I think the important message here, or the concept to have square in your mind, is that rent control will stabilize rents, it'll freeze rents and let them drift up, but it is not about affordability. The programs that you have been doing in the past, that is about affordability, looking at somebody's income and matching their rent to their income. It's about 7,000 when we were counting them up. If, if, those are all broken out in your staff report, the different numbers here.
7,600. 7,600, something like that.
But one other question. This 7,000 includes the properties that were built after 1995. Am I correct?
Well, the number that, oh, I'm sorry, which in?
7,000?
Yes.
That includes all the properties that are not affordable, they're not part of affordable programs, but they are, they were built after 1995.
That is correct. But, but you still have that number of affordable units in your housing stock, which, which equates to 20% of those eligible units.
So going back to, if I may, going back to this slide, I had talked about some of the accomplishments the authority has had since 1978. And in your staff report, there are numbers associated with the different categories, rental, homeownership. What Mr. Lansafain is saying is that there are new construction since 1978, new development projects that are, for the most part, still in place and affordable, about 1,300. Section 8 annually, 3,000. So once you start to count all those units that we've touched in some way since 1978 with affordability, it comes to the number that, and the percentage that he was talking about, which is pretty great when you look at it.
That's 20% of our housing, rental housing stock. Is that, am I, am I correct?
Yes, 20% of the rental housing stock that could be impacted by a rent control program. You have already touched those units by way of the activities of the Housing Authority.
Okay, no, my, my question was, I understand that. That's about 20% of 45,000 is 9,000 units, but this, this one says 5,000 to 7,000.
Now, this is a different statement that's being made here.
Okay, so that's what I'm getting to.
It's just a coincidence that it's somewhat close to the same number Mr. Lansafain is saying. What this is saying is that we have 45,000 housing units. When you look at the census data and you start to look at housing units built after 1995?
That was my question.
About 5,000 to 7,000 would be exempt. So then your 45,000 count potentially would then be reduced down to 38,000 to 40,000 that could potentially be considered under a rent control ordinance.
And 20% of that is already touched by some sort of an affordability?
At some point in time, yes.
In last, after 78?
Correct.
Okay.
So we're just trying to demonstrate the, the lengths that the Housing Authority has gone to try and, over time, develop affordable housing, because really, we're talking about over time for a lot of these programs. Then again, if, if it goes to consideration, there could be some other local exemptions that could be created for something like that. So going back to a couple of the other items that, in 2001 that were implemented, what was implemented in a, at a very brief period of time was voluntary rent mediation, and that was providing a mechanism for review of rent increases, eviction notices, things along those lines, in an effort to limit excessive increases or retaliatory actions that cause evictions. In response to a proposal from the then-formed Glendale Apartment Association, a voluntary rent mediation program was formulated. There was some funding allocated to it from CDBG. In August 2002, though, that voluntary program was discontinued. It had very difficult times in gaining any type of support from the landlords at that time. And then what was passed and still in effect today is the Just Cause Eviction Ordinance. And that was, that is an ordinance that is intended to discourage retaliatory evictions by landlords. Do you remember, I had mentioned, one of the effects of rent control tends to be followed by increased code enforcement activity. So there was a concern as well about code enforcement activity, retaliatory eviction. So there were some exploratory code enforcement programs that were put into place, rental housing inspections in certain areas of the city, and funded by the city at that time, has since gone away, but the ordinance still stays, is still in place. And basically, that ordinance provides 12 legal reasons for an eviction that a landlord must provide to their tenant. If it is not in conformance with the eviction ordinance, then that tenant can then come to the city, through the city attorney's office, for a review of an eviction to see if it follow, falls under just cause eviction. And that completes my report.
So I think in, in conclusion, you've seen some of the programs. If we were going to do something in Glendale, we'd have about 30, 38,000 units that we would have to monitor over time. We would have to set up a program to do that. And again, I would go back to, what is your objective that, as you direct us? The, the, Peter, if you can go forward to the?
Table?
That one. The table there. Really, what that's showing us is it's an income issue in Glendale. The rents are pretty consistent in our neighboring cities, and so it is really about income, which is what's driving us to say, make sure you take a look at affordability. If you want to put a cap on rent, then that may be a program that you go forward with, knowing, eyes wide open, knowing all the things we put together with it. If you want rent to be affordable, because rent control will not bring those rents lower than that, it will prevent them from drifting up higher. If you want to look at affordable, affordable housing and affordable living, then we would recommend you continue on with a myriad of, of programs to the best of our ability and create units that are affordable based on income. Peter, is there any way, Peter, is there any way rent mediation can be reenacted? I mean, we gave them, I think, $15,000 out of the Community Development Block grant. Can that, is there any way to bring that back at all? Well, you certainly, you could, if you wanted to. In the prior iteration, it was a voluntary program. The city had set it up, and it was $15,000, I believe, that we set it up to, to do the mediation. We just didn't get the voluntary buy-in from the property owners. And so unless, and I turn to Mr. Garcia, but unless you made it mandatory, and I'm not sure that, that you can, what the issues are, we, we're not sure that there's any difference in feeling among the landlords today.
And that was $15,000 for outreach for a program that was being operated not by the city, but the Glendale Apartment Owner Association, and funded through them. If that entire function then were to be brought back, it would be nowhere near 15,000.
Right. I think there's a state, some state law, Mike, that would, with certain number of days, if your rent is increased above a certain amount, you have a certain number of days to back out of your lease or whatever. Doesn't work exactly like rent mediation, but it is a program that is available.
I have a question. May I have a question?
Chair Sinanian, are you still there? We? I have a question. Chair Sinanian, are you still there? Did he say yes? I'm here. I can hear you fine.
Okay. Ms. Prozian?
Okay. Mr. Zovak, I have a question. In the beginning, when you were talking about the residential vacancy rate, so the vacancy rate, rate of 1.38, is this number just for March 2016 alone, just for March?
Correct. It's March snapshot of the vacancy rate. As I've indicated, we went back for about the last five years and saw that that number was at 2% or below for that entire time. So it's been very stable in terms of history.
Okay. And then another question. Is there a state in the U.S. that they don't have rent control at all?
Without any form of rent control?
Without any form of?
That's not something that we had researched. I couldn't answer that.
Okay. Thank you.
Chair Sinanian?
Yes?
We have one speaker card. Would you like to hear that now?
Yes, please, that'd be great.
Okay. I'd like to call up, please, Arni Gregori.
How much time do you need, Arni?
Arni, how much time do you need?
Five minutes.
Five minutes?
I read it, whatever I write it.
Okay.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. This is first time I just participate for this, you know. Then I have to some word to just read it for you. My name is Arne Gregori, and I have lived at 1232 East Orange Grove Avenue, apartment 103, for 27 years. I have raised two kids in this two-bedroom apartment. We are both in our 70s, and we can't imagine moving somewhere else, nor afford to. For the most part, we have been happy tenants, but just recently, the owners of the building increased the rent by $200. As you can imagine, for tenants living under Section 8, this is a lot of money. Per Section 504 up Section 8 laws, it is a reasonable accommodation to use 110% of water payment standard under the current Section 8 waters. It will be very difficult for us to maintain the rent payments under Section 504. The increase in water will help us greatly. Please recognize your rejection of an increase in the water, and please clarify Section 504. A person, a response would be greatly appreciated to the loyal tenants, Arne Gregori. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you very much. Mr. Zovek, may I ask you a question? Can they raise a rent like that under Section 8?
They can. They can. Section 8 has a one-year lease at initial occupancy. And then after that, the landlord is then allowed to increase rent.
Okay.
Unfortunately, what Ms. Gregori had brought up is a process that is administrative process through the Section 8 program. When someone is not happy with decisions in that administrative process, there are remedies of going through a hearing, an informal hearing, to contest a decision. So what I'll do is I'll inform them of the process for that, because as I understand it, it was just contesting one of the decisions previously made.
Ms. Gregori, did you hear that? Did you understand that?
Yes.
Great. Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Chair Sinanian, we have another card.
Very well.
Okay. It is Hrah Dersahakian.
Please, in five minutes, please. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Sorry, but I am not talking about English, because my speech is not ready. I'm not prepared for that one. I'm comfortable talking all my language, my first language. Yes, I'm a good speaker. Yes, I'm a good speaker. Yes, I'm a good speaker. I'm a good speaker. I'm a good speaker. I'm a good speaker. Yes, I'm a good speaker. Yes, I'm a good speaker. I'm a good speaker. I'm a good speaker. I'm a good speaker. Yes, I'm a good speaker. Yes, I'm a good speaker. I'm a good speaker. Yes, 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 I'm a good speaker. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you. Chair Sinanian, one more.
Sorry. You want, I have a proof. Listen, see, my rent is top $150. Who wants to see, I can give it to them.
We can make copies.
Just for the clerk. Thank you.
Yes.
Nariman?
Mayor Devine, can we have the third speaker?
Yes, coming right up. Nariman Zarukian.
Yes. I'm a good speaker. Yes, 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 I'm a good speaker. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Chair Sinanian, that's it for the.
That's all the speakers?
Yes, it is all the speakers.
So do my colleagues want to talk about this?
Councilmember Garpetian?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor and Chair Sinanian. I asked for this item to come to the council and the Housing Authority, because, as you all know, and you can see by the attendance in here today, this is a huge issue in the city of Glendale, as well as our neighboring cities. It's not just a Glendale issue. So because we don't have a quorum here, I have a question for the city attorney. Because we don't have a quorum, we can't give directions. We can only make our suggestions known, and when this comes back, we can bring a report accordingly. How do we go about this?
Well, the Housing Authority can give us direction, but if there's any change that the council wanted to give, for example, to the municipal code, there's not, without the quorum of the council, in the chambers, we would need some follow-up. So what I suggest is, you could do one or two ways. The Housing Authority can give us sort of general direction without taking a motion, or it can make a motion, but if there's comments from council members on what they'd like to see as follow-up, then we could take that comment and bring back items as appropriate.
Okay. I think there is a, I don't want to say misunderstanding, but there is another different understanding of the rent control within the community members. So what I would like to do is to have a quick report, maybe a two-page or a three-page report, comparing Glendale to our neighboring cities, to Burbank, La Cressena, Los Angeles, Pasadena, and some of the cities that have rent control, and compare our real rents, not just the affordable, not the ones that should be affordable, like $1,300, I don't think that's the median rent, but compare our rents to our neighboring cities. So we would know how far away are we from our neighboring cities. And also, like city of Los Angeles, I would like to know what the rent increases were for the last two or three years versus Glendale. Then we can have a better educated decision on that. Also, out of that 638,000 units that LA has, I'd like to know how many of them are affordable or under rent control, because after 78, there is no rent control on most of these units. So these are the, I think, the issues that I want to have some information on when we come back, and hopefully soon. Also, on the, I have a question from our city manager. The DOF funds, the Department of Finance funds, how much of that $45 to $50 million is affordable housing funds that you can use to build more affordable housing?
Between the one-time bond monies and the ongoing repayment from the DOF, you should ultimately realize about $16 million in the next five to six years for affordable housing.
$16 million.
Which is probably about two, maybe three projects, depending on how it's phased.
Okay. And also, I'd like to know what the effects of rent control was in the neighboring cities since they had rent control. How much their rent increased after they implemented rent control? Because I know they cannot freeze the rent in the space, basically. They have 3% to 5% increase, plus if they improve their properties, they will increase the rent. I just want our public to understand what rent control means and what it can or cannot do. We have to be very clear on that. So since we're giving directions, or we are talking about issues today, not giving directions, I think. My biggest issue is, what I hear from our constituency is, when their rents are increased by a very large number, 400, 500, we had an example in, on Adams Street, I think it's 413 Adams Street. I had eight or 10 of the tenants meeting with me directly. Their rents went up $400 to $500. And that put some of these people in a virtual bankruptcy. So our laws currently allow the landlords to increase the rent by giving 60 days' notice. And I want to go on the record and say that it's not 60 days' notice. It's less than 30 days' notice. Because if it takes you 15 days to find a place to move to, you can't just get up and move, because you have to give 30-day notice to your landlord in order for you to move. And the other landlord is not going to hold the place for you for another month, for you to stay here one month and then move into this unit. So you have to pay rent where you are currently residing, as well as the new place that you want to hold, as well as the first, last, and deposit. And that accumulates to $6,000, $7,000, $8,000. That's the problem that I see today that people are facing. And they don't have that funds to come up with $6,000 to $8,000 to move into a new place. So what I'm saying, what I'm suggesting today is, when we come back, I want to hear my colleagues as well, I don't know what our rights are as a city council and the Housing Authority. If we can increase that 60 days to 120 days and give people more time, if they're trying to increase the rent by 10, over 10%, also, if we can connect the just cause eviction to a mediation program that we had, rent mediation program that we had, if we can make them one program. Also, look into, if they're increasing the rent by 10% and people have to move, come up with some sort of a relocation fee. I don't know, that's rent control, it's not rent control, but I think these are my suggestions today, to look into and come back with a report quickly, because one of the biggest impacts are, if you have children that go to school in your area and you move out of that area, it affects those children tremendously. My kid wants to go from one school to another, they always follow each other, they always follow their friends. They don't want to go to another school that they don't know anybody. That's the biggest impact that making, forcing people to move just brings that problem for the families, especially young families, that their children, they have to go to another school if they can't find a unit in their area. The DOF funds, I don't know when we can get our hands to those funds to build more affordable housing. Rent mediation, as I said, if we can come up with an idea to merge that with the just cause eviction. And especially for the seniors, this gentleman was indicating, he gets, him and his wife are on social security and their income is very set, and if their rents are going up every other day or every other six months, it's a tough situation. I just wanted to say, you know, this is a reality of life. Rents are going up everywhere. That's what it is. But we need to have some control as to how can we, I just don't want to have this, people come in, they want to evict people because of the just cause eviction, there is no way of doing it except increasing their rents for $500, $600. And $600, $500 a month, it's $6,000 a year. In order for you to come up with $6,000 more a year, you have to make at least $15,000 to $18,000 to be able to pay your taxes, and after everything else, have $6,000 more to pay that increased rent. So these are my comments at this time, Mr. Chair, and I'd like to hear my colleagues as well, and see if we can come up with an idea that we can help our residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Garpetian. So your suggestion was for staff to come back with a report showing what the councils and Housing Authority is on taking possible action with respect to rent?
That, yes. Right now, based on the law, they can, they have to give 60 days' notice if the rents are being increased more than 10%.
Right.
If you can make that change, and make it 120 days, to give people more time to arrange for a move, because as I said, when you find a place, you still have to give your landlord a 30-day notice, or take that 30-day notice out, one or the other. I want to see how my colleagues feel about these ideas, and give people more time to find a better place or a new place with a more affordable rent to move into if they choose to do that. And if it's more than 10%, relocation fee can be another tool to help people to move if they really want them out, because some places, they just want them out so they can renovate it and increase their rent more than $400, $500, maybe increase it by $700, $800.
Okay. Well, I was thinking that proposal, I'm not sure if the 30-day notice period is something that we have an authority to demand or not do. I don't think that's a state law requirement, but in terms of extending that 30 days to longer period, whether we have the authority to even do that, I'd like to hear that from our staff and our city attorney's office.
Chair Sinanian?
Yes. Yes, Mayor Devine.
Yes, Mr. Kelly would like to speak next.
Yes, Mr. Kelly, please.
I have a question. Part B of my question for rent mediation, I don't know if this would go to Peter or Mr. Lansaffam. Part B of the question is, the landlords pulled out of that themselves, community development block grant was kicking in 15%. The landlords pulled out of that themselves, so there's no possible way the landlords can be polled again, that they would reconsider something like that. They just do not want rent mediation?
It was a group that formed as a result of the discussions at that time. I'm not even sure if that group is even still around. And it's not to say that that group, that all landlords agreed to subscribe to that group's proposal. I think it was a, at that time, and it was a while ago, but at that time, it was a proposal on the table that looked like it might be able to go somewhere, and everyone had tried it, and it just didn't work. So to say, to be able to, can we revive that process? No, you couldn't. I would say you can't. I think you would have to start from zero again and try and build that back up.
I'd like to tell Mr. Kelly that I looked over the list of members of that committee, and a lot of them are still around. So we could actually get a report, not that I'm asking for it, but we could actually get a report from them to tell us how it went bad, and I think it was probably just because it was voluntary, and a lot of apartment owners just didn't want to be a part of that.
Yes.